Mr. Hall? We need to need to report out on the closed session.
Mayor and Council, item number one was not discussed because it was determined that it was not necessary. And then item number two, the council had discussion about pending litigation and no report of action.
And Mr. Mayor, just for the record on item number two. On item number two, our office did not participate due to a potential conflict of interest on item number two. Thank you.
So adjourn the closed session meeting. I'm going to call the regular meeting to order. As a courtesy to others, please silence your cell phones during the meeting. And I'm turning mine off and engage in conversations outside the chambers. And Madam Pluck, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bill Bray, councilmember Patton, councilmember Bragg, Mayor Proten Spriggs, Mayor DeDina.
Okay, I would like to invite Monique Cortez, a sixth grader from Nicoloff Elementary School, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And according to her teacher, Brenda Robles, Monique has been a great asset in my classroom. She is a well-rounded student who daily demonstrates outstanding achievement and perseverance in her academics and behavior. She is a role model to her peers and seeks to always help others. Monique's leadership skills and academic excellence is evident in the classroom. Thank you so much for being here. Are there any agenda changes?
Mr. Mayor, I would request the indulgence of the council that we pull item 2.2, the warrant register. I had a couple of questions about some large items there. And item two. Item 2.8 on fireworks.
Okay, so we're going to move those till after the end, right?
And then Mayor, we would ask that item 5.1, the biannual investment report be replaced on the agenda right after the consent agenda. We have some out-of-town consultants or doctors tonight.
Second, second, second. Please vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great. Okay, we have time for announcements, starting with Councilmember Bill Bray.
As a rep for South County EDC, we had Mexican Councilman General Remedios speak at our last meeting. Really just basically saying for the two countries that we need to work together, and I think we are working together. Also talking really about education-wise, doing a lot of internships between Mexico and the United States, the United States and Mexico, which is currently happening. Also, a big focus was, we look at our local businesses, and that's what this is mainly about. Businesses here in San Diego County, and I'm the rep for Imperial Beach, is if we look at our local auto shops, we have a lot of auto shops, independently auto shops that are feeling the pinch. And I think it's real important that we, as we drive by to get our cars fixed, that we look at some of these local shops and that have been here forever, and they do a great job. I know for one, I try my best to shop IB, give my tax money to IB and support the businesses here, and I just want to put that out to you too. Shop IB, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Bragg?
Thank you. I had the privilege of going to Washington DC with the Metropolitan Transit System as chairman of the Accessibilities Committee meeting. We met with three of our congressional members. We met with Susan Davis, Juan Vargas, and Scott Peters. MTS was asking for $8 million for 70 new pair of transit vehicles, which will burn propane instead of gas. So it was just an honor to be there. And the conference that I was attending was the Association of Public Transportation Associations. So there were transportation associations from all over the country. So it was really neat to talk to our peers, whether they were from very small communities or much larger communities. So it was just a wonderful, wonderful three days. I would like to announce, this is a preview of something that's going to be announced tomorrow, so I feel privileged to announce it tonight. The City of Imperial Beach is launching tomorrow our commemorative brick program. If you remember when we did it for the city's 50th birthday, it was a huge success. But at that time, purchase of a brick was $100. The price has been reduced because technology has changed. So the company will come out and laser the bricks right here onsite. They are $52. There are only 125 bricks available. So we do have applications. All of the information is there, all of the details are there, but I would urge you, don't wait. This is going to go fast and it's going to be a lot of fun. If you did not, if you weren't able to have a purchase of a brick last time, try to do it this time because when these 125 are gone, the rotunda will be filled. So don't wait. And then also this weekend, the Chamber of Commerce and Business Improvement District are hosting the Taste of IB. So it's Saturday, the 19th, from 12 to 4. A few of us in town, I'm on a little committee or group, we're very informal. We will be having a History of Imperial Beach booth. And wait till you see some of the things that will be on display. It's kind of a teaser booth. The large booth will be at the mayor's breakfast on Sun and Sea Festival weekend. So what we're asking you is if you think you might have something really cool up in your attic, go get it and bring it down and let's share it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Spriggs?
I don't have an attic, unfortunately. Just a couple items very quickly. I had the honor to be reappointed to serve on the Citizens Forum of the International Boundary and Water Commission, which has its first meeting this year tomorrow night down at IBWC headquarters. And I think the main item on the agenda that should be on the agenda that I'm certainly going to be pushing for this year on the board is the implementation of the treaty minute that addresses the Tijuana River Valley issues of essentially pollution. And to try to create some faster action, binational action. It's all couched in diplomacy, this country and that country and all that. But we really do need a fast track to implementation of some improvements. And the last board, I'm only one of two members that was reappointed from the last board. That was a big emphasis of the last board, and I want to try to carry that forward to this board. I had the honor of participating in the Sand Egg Board of Directors Retreat, which took place Wednesday through Friday last week. Mayor DeDina was our lead representative to the Sand Egg Board, and I'm the first alternate. And we both tried to attend all of the Sand Egg Board meetings, and I was there for all three days. He was able to attend and major working day, which was Thursday, an all-day session. And that Thursday all-day session was extremely important because it addressed the regional transportation plans and strategy for Sand Egg. This is a multi-billion dollar transit highway improvement, HOV lane creation approach to try to make the San Diego metropolitan area better linked transportation-wise, reduce commute times, and increase everybody's quality of life in the process. And there are a number of different approaches that emphasize one component over another. And the discussion was to try to reach the right balance between how much should be invested in transit versus roads versus, for example, grade-level crossings for the trolley at key intersections such as H Street and E Street, et cetera. So stay tuned and there'll be more coming on that. And that's it for me.
So much. Lots of stuff happening. Councilmember Spriggs and I attended Little League opening night, and this is the first year they've had it on a Friday evening instead of on a Saturday, which they said was great to have them be able to play on Saturday morning instead of have the inauguration and hot sun. So that was really, really nice. And I didn't know Councilmember Spriggs used to be a ace pitcher, so that was good to know. Okay, wow. You talked, I think you talked about your fastball, so that was great. Really nice, and we're really lucky to have such a great Little League organization. More importantly, it's great to see all the girls that are playing in Little League now. Really, really, that's really great. So fantastic. More importantly, the speaker system went out and the Marvist Girls Water Polo Team shipped in at the last minute and sang the Star Spangled Banner, which was really moving. It was really nice. It gave it a great feel. So that was a great turn for that. I also, we declared it Girls Water Polo Day today, and I gave a proclamation at the Marvist School Assembly. The Girls Water Polo Team won CIF Division II Section Championships in San Diego. It's the first CIF championship for a girls' team in the history of Imperial Beach or Marvista. So that was great. The boys have only won one, and that was the cross-country team in 1980. So that was a team I dropped off of, by the way. So I'm just kidding, CIF. Anyway, that was really nice. So that was good. We're going to have an empty lot planning session on March 22nd from 3 o'clock to 7:30 PM. I think that's correct. I'm pleased to announce that IB Beautiful just sent us, gave us a check today for $10,000 to pay for that. That's really, really generous. So I want to thank everybody who played a role in making that happen. And obviously, the Board of Directors of IB Beautiful. That's a really, really nice gesture for them. Additionally, they gave us $8,000 to help improve the AT&amp;T Building. That's something we've been negotiating with AT&amp;T for a while. So anyway, that's still moving forward, so we've got some work to do on that, but that'll be really nice as well. On the water quality front, I had expressed my concern about the potential for having Zika in the Tijuana River Valley as a result of the fact that the two species of mosquitoes that transmit Zika are found in the Tijuana River Valley. The fact that we have tens of millions of pieces of plastic in the river valley where these mosquitoes breed is a concern to me. So we had a meeting with CalEPA, the US EPA, the California Department of Public Health, the County Department of Public Environmental Health, as well as our city staff was there, Supervisor Greg Cox was there, and a few other folks. And so they unfortunately gave us a little bit of an unsatisfactory response on why they don't think they need to clean up the Tijuana River Valley. Although I had a follow-up email from Alejandro Redarte, who's the Director of Border Affairs for CalEPA, and they are definitely interested in entertaining proposals to get that area cleaned up. So that's something we're going to work with Supervisor Greg Cox on to really push that forward. And hopefully, we're not sure if the El Nino rains are over, but need to get that prioritized. So anyway. And then finally, I just received this new IB newspaper in the mail today, IB Connection. I'm not sure if anybody else got it in the mail today? Okay, well, anyway, so this is a new local newspaper, so that'll be nice having another positive newspaper in Imperial Beach. Today, we are doing a proclamation for MS Awareness Week, and that's from March 7th to March 13th. And my mom contracted MS in the 1980s and spent over 20 years with MS, actually, close to 30 years with MS. And really painful, really painful disease. Our whole family walked through trying to get new medications and trying to get payments for those medications. So anyway, she died a painful death of cancer, but exacerbated by having MS and cancer was awful. It was a horrible experience to watch my mom die and to be in such pain. So really glad we're doing this. Thank you very much about that. And so MS is a neurological disease of the central nervous system affecting at least 2.3 million people worldwide. Sorry, sorry. Anyway, since 1946, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been a driving force of MS research, relentlessly pursuing prevention, treatment, and cure, and has invested more than $920 million in groundbreaking research. And the City of Imperial Beach recognizes the importance of finding the cause and cure of MS, a chronic and often devastating disease, and expresses its appreciation and admiration for the dedication that the National Multiple Sclerosis Society Northern California has shown toward a future free of MS. I search DeDina, Mayor of the City of Imperial Beach, together with the city council, do hereby proclaim March 7th to March 13th, 2016, is MS Awareness Week. I guess we're a week late. And do commend the observance of all our citizens. I encourage all Californians to learn more about multiple sclerosis and what they can do to support individuals with MS and their families. Thank you. And then we have a check to receive from California American Water. I love it. We talk about all the money we're receiving, all the nice donations. So Brian Bredo here is here with California American Water. So you have a presentation to make.
My name is Brian Bredo, External Affairs Manager for California American Water, and I'm proud to be here tonight. On behalf of California American Water, I'm here to present a very large check in size and also in dollar amount, $65,000 to the city on behalf of partnering with you on our Triangle Park project. So I would love to applaud the council for your leadership, given that we have a drought, and your leadership on turning Triangle Park into a beautiful drought conservation area so that families, the community can come, can learn about how to save water and how to best needs the means of the community. So on behalf of California American Water, I'm proud to present this check to you.
Great, thank you much. How about a round of applause?
And while the council's going down there, Mayor, I just thought I would make sure that everybody knew there's an item later on your agenda to talk about what we'll be doing in Triangle Park. I think it's item 5.4.
Did anybody want to say any words at all about this donation? Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bredo. We really appreciate the notion, and I know this is going to be a great parking. Looking forward to ripping out grass. We spend money, we send you guys checks to water. So anyway, that's great. Thank you very much. Now we have Public Safety Director French has an announcement.
Mayor, city council, I'll be real quick tonight. I just wanted to let you know that on March 2nd, I was out on the corner with the mayor and our firefighters, and we were out there doing a boot drive for the Tandago Burn Institute. And our firefighters raised over $3,500, just in two hours of work out there. I thank the mayor for coming out there with us. We had a fun time. And our next fundraiser we're doing for the Burn Institute is going to be June 4th at the Delmar Fairground. It's going to be a demolition derby. So we're getting sponsors for our car right now, and then it'll be out there with other fire departments and other public safety agencies.
Thank you very much. Now we have Assistant City Manager Dush has an announcement.
Mayor, members of council, the mayor had already indicated that on, actually, next Tuesday, the 22nd, we'll be having an open house in the vacant lot across from the hotel. And the purpose of that is to get ideas about how that area can be programmed. So again, it's an open house format from 2 to 7:30. Drop by. If you can't drop by, you can certainly email me and provide me your comments or suggestions on how that area could be programmed. And so again, Tuesday, 2 to 7:30.
Thank you very much. Are there any other announcements from staff? We have, are there any other speaker slots, Madam Pluck?
I've got some here.
Okay. Now we have Tim O'Neill.
Tim O'Neill, 655 Seacoast Drive. Jackie's going to be passing out to you a photo that I took this morning of the old boardwalk. And I've watched this thing deteriorate for the last couple of years, and I kind of think that it deserves to be removed from the beach in a more dignified fashion than just being a victim to the waves, essentially. I think this is a piece of IB history that deserves the attention to at least look at the feasibility of removing it. It is in the public right of way. I don't envy anybody that is going to have to deal with the Coastal Commission on this one because you're dealing with the gentleman whose property is behind it. You're going to have to deal with his shoreline protection. But at the same time, like I said, I think it is definitely something we should look into, and I hope you would support that. Thank you.
Thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. Now we have Pam and Joe Gallagher. Are you speaking together? Okay, so just one of you will come up?
Thank you, Mayor. And to the council now, first I want to thank you all for all the things that you do for the City of Imperial Beach. I've only lived here for eight years, but it's it's great. We were interested in asking the council to possibly consider the feasibility of a fenced dog somewhere on one of the public grounds that we have, simply because the closest one that we have to go to is the beach in Coronado or in Hillcrest. I think also maybe Pacific Beach. There are a lot of dog owners who walk their dogs in the parks, which is great. We really would like to have an opportunity to have our animals be free. And I know for safety purposes of the public, obviously, a confined area, some type of fencing, you know, three feet high is typical in most other areas where they have dog parks. I think Chula Vista just opened one at the end of CN between Broadway and Fifth, next to the tennis courts there. And they have a fencing area that's approximately about three feet or three and a half feet high. Nobody seems to be using it. I've talked to some animal control officers who, you know, were just aware of it, but in the times they've driven by, there hasn't been any use. Part of it's built on the side of a hill, so it might be not the most advantageous for walking your dog. A pretty steep hill, about 45 degrees. There are certainly areas within the cities that I think might be appropriate. I know we'd have to do a study. I didn't know whether starting a petition, you know, might be an avenue. I'm open to suggestions on that. I have an animal that is two years old and likes to run. I ride him around my bike all the time, but he also likes to engage with other animals. And I think having an area within the city itself where we might be able to do that at a minimal cost of fencing an area. The east side of Veterans Park, below the soccer field, it's up next to the Boys and Girls Club, immediately adjacent to the gymnasium. It's kind of on a sloped angle, and not many people actually sit in that part of the park. The area where the children's playground is, is often frequented with members of families and their young children. That area below the soccer field where it's level, and I guess, I'm not sure of the street that it borders on, but there's a corner in there that is already fenced on one side. It already has a six-foot or seven-foot brick fence on the other side. So two of the corners of a square area are already confined. Maybe at a minimum cost, be able to close the, you know, two more sides of that. That would certainly be my suggestion. But I'm also also going to find out how we might be able to approach the council with concerns of other people that have similar ideas. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And just so everyone knows, our lack of responses, that we're not interested, and you're interested, just legally, we can't comment on items on the agenda. So I'm assuming our city manager will follow up and get your information. Thank you so much. June Engel from the library? Is she going to announce new staff? Introduce new staff? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you didn't. Oh, okay. Okay, wait, wait, wait. Sorry. Could you just state your name and put a record on your address for us?
My name is Pam Gallagher. I'm the other half. And we have just recently, actually in the past like six months, been involved in a little dog group at Veterans Park. And it's, we have a dog Ziggy. He's like two years old, a labrador, a lot of energy. And as you can see, we're senior citizens, and so it's very
We couldn't tell, by the way.
For us to be able to go somewhere where we can just throw the ball and let him run and interact and be social with other dogs. And Imperial Beach, I don't think there's, you know, a household that doesn't have a pet or several dogs. We really need an outlet for the dogs to socialize, you know, freely. And we take them to the Coronado Dog, I mean, yeah, the Coronado Dog Beach. And that's great. We have to drive to Coronado. So what about IB? And to me, Veterans Park is, I don't know anything about the bureaucracy, but Veterans Park is like a wonderful area that we could make a dog park. And my doggy's name is Ziggy. And we took him to the number one rated dog park in San Diego, Nate's. I don't know if you guys know that, but I Googled Nate's Dog Park. It's number one. So we take Ziggy there. We go downtown San Diego. It's huge. Actually, it looks like a huge grassy lawn, but it was a huge dirt pit. And my husband is, the first slash he is, was kind of hooking up with a group of people whose dogs obviously were unhealthy, coughing. And I said to him, Joe, why do you see these dogs unhealthy, you know, you need to move our dog away from them? And I thought, I didn't notice, and I mean, they're skin and bones mangy. And so sure enough, within like four days, Ziggy came down with kennel cough. He's like gagging and wheezing and coughing. So that's going to be like a, you know, a hundred dollar bet go for us tomorrow morning. All because, you know, we're going to a place where the dogs can run and breathe. But I know that IB, it's just we're such a tight community. And when I go over to Veterans Park, we connect with other dog owners and socialize. It's like a community gathering for us. And I'd really like that to be, you know, something that everybody can enjoy and not have to worry about animal control. Maybe even not a whole area set up, but maybe like five to seven, five days a week, or just a part of the day that dog owners can socialize and let their animals socialize. It's really important. We really need that. I don't want to go to Coronado. I want to do it here.
Thank you so much for my presentation.
Thank you very much.
Now we have June Engel. Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it.
So are we doing name and address still? Is that still part of the, okay. Well, hi, I'm June Engel. I'm going to take, I'm the branch manager of the Imperial Beach Library, and I want to take this opportunity to introduce you to Grace Paul Ball. He's our new supervisor. She's our new supervisor, and you'll be seeing her around. Over the years, nothing's ever amazed me more than the creativity of my staff. And less than three weeks ago, she got handed a Friday discovery craft, and that's usually one of our nicer crafts for the kids and families to come and do. And in that three weeks, she came up with Dr. Seuss Month, and this was last Friday. For us. If you can see this from here on, if you can come in here. I am incredible self, I'm incredible creative self, and Grace is a wonderful addition to that. She comes to us, gets this from...
Wow.
Thank you very much, you guys have been nice.
Thank you so much, so much. Now, we have John Di Tomaso.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. There's a couple of things...
Can you just say your name and address for the record?
John Di Tomaso. There's a few things I'll talk about as quick as I possibly can. They're near and dear to my heart because I live in IB, I love it. So, one is add some T landlords and owners that don't take care of their property. There's weeds, a lot of people park on their front lawns, they just don't take care of their property. The weeds are overgrowing. The landlords, they rented a lot of degenerates a lot of times, but I mean, I mean, it is what it is, you know? I mean, my house got almost broke into last week. They popped on my screens, I have a brand-new house over here. So, that's one thing. I'd really like to have owners take responsibility for their properties and clean them up. We need to get a task force or something, I don't know what we need to do, but... Second, real quick, I'm going to get quick, the Tijuana River. I know you guys mentioned we're working on it, but is there anything substantial? Because I surf, and it's hard to surf in Tijuana's sewage, so I'd like to definitely, is there any updates on what we're doing to clean that up? Should I talk to Mr. Spriggs, or? Okay.
Yeah, so let me, maybe we can just, see, maybe I can follow up with you, or you can follow up now.
Yeah, first, make sure that Edvia, who's sitting right there with the computer and came in like out of breath, sat down next to you.
He's working.
He's working hard. Make sure that he has your contact information, because there's a lot of ways to get involved and a lot of different ways at all different levels, everything from...
It's sad when we can't, you know, you know, my friend, we both surf here all the time, and we can't get in the water a lot of times, and it's been a taboo over here for IB, and we both love it.
Would love to have you guys involved.
Yes.
Different ways, IBWC, there's just a lot of different ways to get involved.
Yeah, we share your opinion.
A lot of surfers on the...
Yeah, we share your opinion.
And I want to ask one more question that's kind of out of the box a little bit, but I'm going to ask anyways. Why does it have to be named Tijuana Slough? Why can't it be named Imperial Beach Bird Sanctuary? Just curious, I mean, it's, it's not Tijuana.
So, we can follow up with you after. No, we, I'm not sure we're allowed to answer all this stuff. I'd rather, we have a long agenda, but I will give you my card, and you can follow up with me. I actually wrote an article about the history of the Tijuana Slough, so we could, there's people here that could give you a long explanation of that.
I'm just, my question is, can we change the name of it to make it more of a more inviting for guests that come to our, because my feeling when I first came to IB, it sounds like it's part of Tijuana, it sounds like Tijuana's, it's not an appealing name for IB. And that's all I'm saying. It would be nice to call it this IB Bird Sanctuary.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Maybe you can just make sure you get in contact with our code enforcement department as well. Yeah, okay. Great, thank you. Okay. That's it for the presentation. I would like to entertain a motion to approve consent calendar item numbers 2.1, actually 2.1 through 2.0, minus 2.2 and 2.8. Can I say it like that? Okay. Please vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, now, we had a change in the order of the agenda. We have the biannual investment report presented by Chandler Asset Management, that's item 5.1. Administrative Services Director Bradley will introduce the item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As part of our investment policy, City Council has asked that twice a year, we have our investment advisor come up and give a summary of our investments as well as some breakdown of the market and the economy. So, tonight, we have Jason Schmidt, again, which you've all seen before, from Chandler Asset Management. So, I'll ask him to come up and go ahead and do the presentation.
Nidhi, everyone, thank you for having me present this before. All right, all right. So, let's talk about your investment portfolio a little bit. So, what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about the economy. Actually, the Federal Reserve met today, so maybe we'll give a little recap of that, and then we'll talk a little bit about your portfolio, what we've been doing in the portfolio, and how the portfolio's been performing. So, I'm going to let you read page three, but what I'm going to talk about here is page number four, which is really the employment report. And so, on the employment side of the equation, employment continues to strengthen. We continue to have the unemployment rate fall. The unemployment rate now is below 5%. And also, we have the underemployment rate, which is basically those workers that are marginally detached and things like that, maybe a broader measure, also below 10% there. This is one of the things that the Federal Reserve has been talking about, and more recently, they talked about some of their expectations for interest rates in the future. And today, what they really talked about was how they were reducing the number of perceived interest rate increases that may happen this year. And what that has been reduced from was approximately four to actually only two this year. And one of the things that they've been talking about is some of the global things that have been going on. There's global weakness in some of the other economies today, and with that backdrop, we've really seen to where rates have come down a little bit, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. The consumer on a retail sales basis, on a year-over-year basis, you can see that January is starting to pick up a little bit, but we saw retail sales pick up, which is a positive. Also, we continue to see consumer confidence come back. These numbers now are more indicative of kind of the environment that we're in today, between 2% and 3% GDP growth. Economic activity, the leading economic indicators, that's really driving the economy forward, which you really want to look at there if you have two to three negative consecutive numbers, and we really don't have that today, so that really points me to moderate growth. And then, the other aspect of that is the Chicago National Fed Activity Index, and that continues to be kind of within the middle, the .7s. It's either minus .7 is when you're in some sort of recession or even slowdown, or positive .7 for a long period of time might show that you're in some sort of recovery, but also maybe inflationary. Right now, it's probably towards that lower end of the band. So, we're looking at an economy that will probably be growing between 2% to 2.5% in 2016. Housing continues to do pretty well here. This is total housing starts, the dark green graph there is single-family home, lighter green graph there on the bar graph is multifamily. Multifamily's becoming more and more as a piece of the overall picture. We can see that in our own communities, how we see condos, apartments, and things like that being built. Also, on the other side, there's the Case-Shiller Price Index, and what you can see there in 2013, we came off about 13% year-over-year changes in housing prices. Now, they're back to some sort of more normalized levels. Remember that housing typically grows at the rate of inflation, maybe 3% to 5% is what that appreciation has been. What we have seen more recently is some of that recovery that really took place after the housing crisis that we had. Manufacturing continues to be the weakest spot. Remember, we have a very strong dollar on a relatively basis, and so the Institute of Supply Management there, anything above 50 is an expanding manufacturing sector, anything below 50 is a contracting manufacturing sector. And so, we kind of bottomed out there around 48, we're starting to increase, but still, it's something that we have some slowness in the overall manufacturing sector, and you can also see that with the capacity utilization numbers, which you see are below some of their longer-term averages, but not so much so, meaning about 80% is the long-term average, and we're pretty close there at 77, maybe even 77.5%. But definitely, it's one of the areas that has had some weakness in the overall economy. This is the GDP, not going to focus too much on the tables on that one side, just going to let you know that basically, the fourth quarter growth rate, it was revised up from .7 to 1. Remember, a lot of that was actually inventory built, so we'll have to see if all of that gets sold off and they're able to manufacture some more inventory. But I would say that chances are what we've seen in the past, if you've had kind of slower fourth quarter and first quarter growth, and then it accelerates off of that, we believe that that's the pattern that's going to continue in the future. Our forecast is between 2% and 2.5%. Given the economic numbers today, though, I would shade that towards that bottom end of the range, probably around 2% is what we're looking at for the US. Then, inflation, which is on page 10 here, looking at CPI. So, CPI, you can see that green line there is that broadish measure, and then that lighter green line is core CPI, which extracts food and energy. And what you can see there is that you can see that inflation has started to rise, the reason being, we've started to see energy prices stabilize, maybe even go up a little bit, and so that really has some effect on that. On the PCE, which is really what the Fed looks at, which is the personal consumption expenditures, that's also started to rise. Remember that their target there is around 2%, so they're a little bit below their 2% target, but what we're looking for for the Federal Reserve is really probably around two interest rate increases here this year, probably one in the summertime, and then the other probably in December. They typically don't want to move during an election cycle, so they'll probably wait until after the election cycle in November before they move again. That will put the Fed funds rate at around 1%. And so, we're definitely getting towards a more normalized investment horizon then. Here, you can see bond yields, and I think the most interesting thing here, the first graph is, on the bottom there, you can see that dark green is the two-year note, the lighter green is the five-year note, and then the tan line there is the 10-year U.S. Treasury note. And after the Fed raised rates, what happened to longer-term interest rates? It actually came down. And so, sometimes, that's counterintuitive, but if you think about it, the Fed's raising rates, and they're actually slowing down the economy a little bit, you probably have less inflation that's expected to, which will drive down those rates. And then, you can see the yield curves on the other side, not going to spend too much time there, just going to point out to you that yields are definitely a little bit lower, and also, the yield curve is a little bit flatter, i.e. that shorter-term rates have risen a little bit more than that of longer-term rates. Any questions on the economy? All right, it's still there. So, looking at page section two, looking at your investment objectives, so safety, liquidity, and finally, yield, the performance objectives for the one-to-three-year U.S. Treasury note. We buy high-quality securities, U.S. Treasuries, agencies, and A-rated or better corporates for your portfolio, facilitate that mandate. Here, on page 14, you can see that your portfolio fully complies with your investment policy and California State Code. And then, on page 15, remember that this is just a portion of the overall portfolio, so there are other liquidity elements and things like that, so the overall value is a little bit larger than that. I'm going to focus here on February 29th, and so, the average mature year portfolio is 2.04 versus the benchmark, which is 1.02, so about average two-year portfolio. So, if we start to see interest rate increases, we'd be able to reinvest into that new environment. The average duration of that is 1.81 versus 1.79. Remember, duration's your portfolio's sensitivity, interest rate, the higher that number, the more sensitive, the lesser net number, the less sensitive. You're actually right on top of that at the benchmark today. The average purchase yield is 1.19%, the average market yield is .95. If you think of one of those liquidity elements that you could use, which is late, the yield there's approximately 40 to 50 basis points within the day. So, really, by having that longer-term strategy, you have more earnings that you're earning in the portfolio. It's a double-A rated portfolio, and the market value of that portfolio's increased from $23.7 to almost $23.9 million over that period of time. And then, you can see here the sector distribution. You can see that, I'm just going to focus it on February, you can see that 21% of the assets from U.S. Treasuries, 27.9% in corporate securities, about 1.2% in the money market, very small amount, 7.8% asset-backed securities, and about 42.2% in U.S. Agency Securities, and not that big of a change from the month earlier, or the three months earlier.
I just, excuse me.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt, I just wanted to point out that in our staff report, our page 16 is different than this one on this screen.
And what we have done is, we have actually updated the information, I think, on the information you have from January, I think, or maybe even December, so this is just a little bit more current information then. And then, on page 17, what you can see is really the overall issuers, and what I really want you to take away from here is that the majority of the issuers, the higher percentages are that in the U.S. Agencies, and then, as you go below that, you can see that the issuers come down from there. Also, you can see it's very well diversified, it has insurance companies, it has technology companies. One of the things I want to point out here, too, is we've all heard about oil prices and how that's really hurting some of the companies. You do own Chevron-Texaco, but remember that you started off from a very high base. This is a company that has a very, very high balance sheet. It started off as a double-A plus-rated company. It has been downgraded recently, it's now down to a double-A minus, that's still a very, very high credit. If you think about your investment policy, the minimum requirement there is A-, so you still have a long way to go there before this would be outside of that. Also, you're looking at one of the stronger oil companies that's out there. I would put them up with ExxonMobil and things like that. So, it definitely is not some of these companies that really have the high leverage. I do think that, yes, there could be some more pain in that industry moving forward, but I think these are some of the companies that are going to be benefactors of that in the sense that they have balance sheets in which they can make acquisitions, and with that, they can also make the interest payment. Remember that they didn't lose money last year, and that they're still able to make those interest payments with a lot left over. So, we definitely think that it still is a strong company. Yes, yes, so we have stayed away from Volkswagen, we do have some of the others like American Honda and sometimes Toyota, but we have stayed away from Volkswagen.
Just, you know, with investments in JP Morgan, Wells Fargo, if there's another downturn in the housing market, is that something you're concerned about these taking a hit?
I actually, I don't really, we really don't forecast the housing market to take a little downturn. We think that, yes, you know, as things weaken, we could probably see where prices would be a little bit less, but underwriting standards are so much better than they were maybe 10 years ago when we had the height of the crisis. You also see where the government is very much involved, meaning a lot of those are really passed-through mortgages, meaning that JP Morgan writes that mortgage, it then goes to Fannie Mae and they portfolio that mortgage. But I do think that underwriting standards in general are much better. Also, the borrowers of credit now are much better than they were in the past. To some extent, I think they're probably maybe a little bit too tight at this point, too, where it's very difficult to get a mortgage. So, I think that that pendulum swings, and right now, it's really to that conservative side.
I'm assuming you guys are obsessively monitoring that.
Yes.
Okay. I don't think any of us have forgotten what happened last time, so.
Right.
Good, okay.
Right, and just so you know, you know, when we were managing portfolios during that crisis, we did not have any defaults in our portfolio.
Oh, good, okay.
And so, we definitely, there are some dials and things that we can turn within the portfolio, go up in quality, not have some of those, you know, financial companies and things like that. And if you think about it, JP Morgan and Wells Fargo are probably some of the strongest institutions in the US today.
Good, thank you.
The other side of that is, are we earning enough on the portfolio to protect the principal against the effects of inflation? And when you were talking about 1% plus or minus in a couple, a couple slides earlier with, even earlier than that, in your economic report, inflation approaching 2%, and that's kind of the Fed's target as well.
Right.
How do we protect principal, other than going down this list further into more higher-risk investments?
Well, I think if you think about it, the yield that I quoted was a purchase yield, which was 1.19%, meaning that we have some yields that are higher than or lower than that. The other thing, if you look at it, if we were to see higher rates of inflation, we're probably going to see higher interest rates at the same time. Typically, that's conducive to one another. And what we can do is, and what we have been doing, is reinvesting some of those lower-yielding securities into higher-yielding securities. The one thing about the portfolio also that is, the investable universe is much less than that of your personal portfolio. And so, the maximum maturity that we can have is five years, so we're really restricted by that. And then, also, when you look at corporate securities and things like that, they must be rated A or better. So, sometimes, it becomes difficult for the portfolio to keep up with inflation, but definitely, we're using all the dials that we possibly can and the investable universe to do that. And the reason why we may have a little bit harder time keeping up with inflation, because if you think about it, shorter-term portfolios typically have a lower yield, and yet, and a lot of times, will yield a little bit less than inflation, but we are cognizant of that.
Well, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but over time, if we are earning less than the inflation rate, we're actually depleting our reserves in real-dollar terms. And does that suggest that we need to look, take a look at our investment policies so that perhaps there can be, because the community's losing, right?
Right.
We're losing because we're conservative, and we're not earning enough on the portfolio to keep up with inflation, so the value of the money is declining, which is not consistent with protecting the asset.
Right.
So, we're using a protective strategy that's not working. Would you recommend that at some point in the future, if this continues, that we look at that investment? Or is there some sort of state code that prevents us from adopting a more aggressive investment strategy?
So, as far as the overall investment policy, I think that you're using most of the tools or have the ability to use most of the tools that are available in state code. So, I don't think there's really a whole lot you can do with your overall investment policy. One of the things to remember is, when we started to invest this portfolio, rates were really low at that period of time. And so, one of the things that we looked at is maybe a strategy that was a little bit shorter, and then, as rates get more, for a more normalized basis, to look at maybe a longer-term strategy dependent upon what the cash flows of the city were over that period of time. to look at maybe a longer-term strategy dependent upon what the cash flows of the city were over that period of time. So as we see the, maybe the normalization of interest rates, yes, there are some things that we can look at, and one of those things could be to have a slightly longer-term strategy. So where you have today an average maturity of about two, maybe you would have an average maturity of about two and a half to 2.75. Not necessarily going too far out, and, but also taking advantage of where you can on the yield curve. And so there are some things that we can do about there. But I would say, in my professional opinion, that we still aren't out of kind of this low-interest-rate environment. And I think there still is a lot more risk there that rates go up, even though that we have some snowless that's going on in the economy today. So I wouldn't necessarily recommend to go out right now. But I do think that in the future, there will be the ability to look at the portfolio, maybe go out a little bit further, thus getting closer to that inflation rate, that long-term inflation rate that you've been talking about. Any other questions? Yeah.
While we're in the question mode.
Okay.
I should have asked you this during your economic report. You'd mentioned that, you talked about the Fed and the inflation and employment. And it looks as though the low unemployment rate right now is starting to generate pressure on, upward pressure on wages. Is that upward pressure on wages likely to manifest itself, A, here in San Diego, and B, for IB residents who work all over the county? And what do you see as the time horizon for that upward wage pressure starting to manifest itself in a way that matters to us here?
Okay. So let's talk about just locally. My brother is in construction, and so he does a lot of projects for schools and things like that. So in your own contracts, what you're seeing is wages are going up. There's no doubt about that. There's actually, believe it or not, there's a shortage of construction workers today in the Southern California region, just for a lot of economic reasons and things like that. And so how that's manifesting itself is, yes, you're seeing pressure on wages. On a national basis, you can see that for every job that's out there, there's about 1.7 to 1.6 people that are looking for that job. At the height of the recession, we had 10 to one. For every one job out there, there was 10 people looking for that job. And so what we're really starting to see now is that upward pressure on wages. This is what the Fed is worried about, and this is why the Fed raised rates in the past, in December. Because one of the things that really starts to stoke inflation is really wage pressures. And that's what they're really worried about. And so I think that as far as in Southern California, we're already starting to see the effects. We have a very, very low unemployment rate in general. We also have, you know, some skills gaps that are going on here where we don't have enough folks with the right skills to really do those jobs. And the other thing that you're seeing, even within IB, as far as the city, I'm sure that you're starting to see where your contracts, where they were becoming relatively low, you're starting to see where there's some increases there, especially on the construction side of the equation. So as far as an IB resident, I think what you're going to see is just higher wage pressures. And I think that's something that's here to stay, unless we were really to see a very large slowdown globally, which would manifest itself in the US. I just don't see that as being the forecast today. All right. Moving forward, just looking at the quality distribution, only thing I really want you to take away from here is that your policy calls for securities rated A or better by a nationally-recognized rating agency, but not rating securities by S&amp;P are rated by either Moody's or Fitch. And then looking at the duration distribution, your portfolio as of the 29th is in green. As of November, it's in the brown there. What I really want you to point out here is just how much you should have maturing off in the next couple of years. And so that if the funds are needed for projects, they can be used for those projects. If they're needed or could be invested, there's definitely some ability to reinvest into this higher-interest-rate environment, thus increasing the earnings of the portfolio moving forward. And then you can see here is my investment performance. Remember, this is both realized and unrealized gain losses, so it's total return plus any income. So over the last three months, you've earned 68 basis points versus your benchmark of 63. Over the last 12 months, 1.13% versus 98 basis points. Over the last two years, 1.02 versus 1.82, and since inception, 1.03 versus 1.81. So exceeding that of the benchmark in all those periods. But if I were to ever come here and tell you that I made 12% in the benchmark, and it's like 1%, definitely ask me the question of how we're earning those higher returns, because we'd be taking on much more risk than what is needed in the portfolio. And then looking at the holdings, I can answer any question that you may have in the holdings section, including that of the corporate securities.
Any questions? Great, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Now we have public hearings. We have 4.1 Sudbury Palm LLC applicant considered the modification of certain conditions of approval of Resolution 20-11-2011-7131 for the Breakwater Development, also known as Ninth and Palm. And move on, no, just want to move on, that's all. I declare the public hearing open, and Administrative Services Director Dish will give a report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'll be brief. This is a request not for the approval of the project, but it is a request for a modification of certain conditions of the project that was approved by the city council back in December of 2011. Displayed on the screen is a picture of the site plan. That is, that is the approved site plan. There are effectively no changes to the site plan being proposed, nor the uses. The request on behalf of the applicant is to rehabilitate and do partial construction of an alley as opposed to complete reconstruction, as well as a request to allow one utility pole to remain above ground as opposed to remove all of them. And so briefly, I'll just kind of show where the location of these asks are. So this is the alley in question on the southern end of the property. And again, it is a, it is a concrete construction, and it has a lot of life left in it. And so the applicant is requesting to simply modify and patch some of those areas. And again, all of the utility poles that are in the alley, and if you've been out there recently, some of those have been already removed. And they'll all, they'll all be removed but for the one located in this general location. That serves a number of other areas, and that could be located in an undergrounding district in the future. So again, that's the extent of the request. I did want to point out, in this picture, you can see it a little bit better because it's larger. The, there was a condition on the original approval that requires the applicant to come back, not necessarily the city council, but in the event that they're here, they wanted to show you this enhanced wall that is a split-face sort of CMU along with some landscaping. And then you can see the light fixtures that will be located on their site, but will be situated in a fashion to where it'll not only illuminate their site, but also the alley and improve that area. So the aesthetic of that alley area would be enhanced. So again, briefly, the request is to modify the condition for full reconstruction to not doing that in terms of just doing the patching, the rehabilitation, and then to allow for the leaving of one singular utility pole. Staff recommends that the modifications to these certain conditions of approval be approved. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. The applicant is here. And before I turn it over to them, if there aren't any questions, they've asked me to put up a slide for their presentation.
First, do we have any, is the presentation before the public? Yeah, okay, sorry, okay, move forward without them.
So with that, I believe that the applicant, Mr. Sudbury, is here and would like to say a little bit about the request and the project.
Yeah, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Colton Sudbury, Sudbury Properties. And we don't really have a full presentation. I just really want to come up here and answer any questions, but also just let you know how excited we are to finally be here. We had an announcement that went out just a few days ago that we are getting ready to break ground here in less than a month. And it's been a long process, but I want to thank everybody up here tonight and your predecessors that worked so hard and tirelessly with us and the Department of Finance and redevelopment agencies to make sure this project can happen. It's really been an unusual situation and a big learning experience that hopefully we never have to go through again. But we finally, we prevailed. And after a long delay, are ready to get started. We have some great tenants lined up. We did make some announcements on a few of those a few days ago. We don't like to usually announce the tenants that leases are signed, and that's why we've been kind of quiet about it. But if you did read the announcement, the tenants we did announce for Grocery Outlet, which is a great market coming to town, they have a new organics division, which is amazing and very well-received. And we have Starbucks and Chipotle and Jersey Mike's and some great food users coming to town. Baskin Robbins is coming back. They're actually a tenant that was here before, and they were very successful and wanted to come back. And so we're really happy with the process, where we come from and where we're going. And we think that's some great, kind of one-of-a-kind tenants, as well as some more national and regional tenants. It would be great probably being, and new to IB as well. As far as the request, you know, things, the project was approved many, many years ago. There's a whole bunch of different conditions and things that we all agreed to. And I think there were just a couple of things here that in retrospect probably should have been looked at a little more carefully by us and maybe even staff at that time. And one of which is the alley. We think it can definitely be repaired, it should be repaired. It shouldn't be left the way it is. But completely just rip it out and redo it is a very, very monumental task and very disruptive. And we think that there's a way to make it look just fine and operate just fine with some repairs. The retaining wall, we think, was something that we changed, but it's for the better. It'll be more visually pleasing and will also be more graffiti-resistant than what was originally proposed there, which is more of a straight wall. Just so you know, the wall has to happen to help with the drainage issues. There's some drainage issues on that site. And so the wall does go up there. It's not that tall, you know, six feet. I think the highest is eight feet, I believe, but most of it's much lower. But that will help solve some of those problem drainage issues back there and bring the site up to grade, too. So I think that's a big improvement and something that we're prepared to do. And respectfully request that you can approve our changes that are minor, we think. And with that, if there's any questions for us, happy to answer them.
Yeah, and if my council colleagues can press the button. So we have Mr. Patton.
I've been with us so long, and I'm excited. This started before my time on the council. Very excited about getting that pile of dirt into something where I could go spend my money. The question is on the pavement of the alley. I believe good patches can be done.
Yeah.
What happens in four years when that patch needs replaced? Who's that on? Is that, do you replace it? Does the city replace it? Or do we maintain it? I guess maintenance of that.
Right, well, I believe it is in the city right of way. So typically, when we do a new project, we're responsible for, you know, upgrades to our, to the property that we're developing. It was a little bit unusual that we did what we did here, but it's fine, you know. But we're prepared to continue on and repair it. But as far as in the future, if there's problems, we haven't really quite got to that. I mean, typically, it would be, you know, any public street would be city expense to repair.
I guess that we have that down, we know that in advance.
That's correct. It is a public street. We will be responsible for the maintenance, long-term maintenance of the road. It is a public road.
Thank you, that's all, I think.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Briggs?
Mr. Sudbury, we really do appreciate you and your company hanging in there. And it's been a mutual struggle. While I know that you've devoted a lot of time to this project, and time is money, and both in terms of staff time and your partner, your partner's time, esteem, but also, you know, the, what you've had to invest here and how long it's been sitting there. You know, we, too, have had to invest a lot to keep this project alive. Every council meeting, going back months, I've been dismayed at the amount of legal fees we've incurred in order to fight the state of California to keep this project alive and not have it become part of the redevelopment mess that has been going on and affected so many other communities. But we were successful, we're happy about that. We look forward to a really great project. And maybe you could take a couple minutes to describe what we're looking at on the screen right now and how that's going to work and sort of serve the overall community and as well as the customers.
Yes, sure, we'd be happy to. So what you're seeing right here is a image of our main courtyard between some restaurant buildings. And as you can see, we have a kind of a water feature fireplace combo here with some nice seating around it. We have drought-tolerant landscaping, but we can do it in a very, very pleasing way. It's going to be, I think, a very nice environment with the landscape we have proposed. Upgraded hardscape furniture, more of an eclectic mix. We want to do with the furniture, not just, you know, typical patio seating. Something a little different and fun. And right there, you're, that courtyard is actually flanked by four different food users. And we have, you can see a couple of different seating areas that are different in their environment. Some are more protected by the little retaining walls. And we tried to do some elevation change in there to make it a little more interesting with these walls and the planting. So there's some different environments, some by the water feature, some more by just a more low-key planting area. And then I think if you were to, we don't have the other images, but there's some nicer images of the architecture that shows how it relates more to the courtyard. And so we think it's going to be a real exciting place to gather and congregate for the community. It's nothing really like that in the commercial sectors along the Imperial Beach Drive here or Ninth and Palm. But we think this will be a big amenity to the community. We also plan on doing a bit of a dedication of such to the naval base, and it's a big part of the community. And a little bit of a, you know, monumentation for them and something that acknowledges them and their importance to the region and to Imperial Beach. And so that's not depicted here, but it'll be in this courtyard and something we're excited about. And we also have a groundbreaking ceremony that is scheduled, but I believe we got it for the 20th. Is that right? We didn't get that finalized? Yeah. The 20th, we hope to be actually, you know, out there moving a little bit of dirt before then, but to have an actual ceremony to celebrate the groundbreaking on the 20th, which we hope to have everybody there.
Just to clarify, April 20th?
April 20th, yes, excuse me, April 20th, yeah.
I just had one additional question for you. And that is, if you could describe a little bit, for those of us who aren't familiar with Grocery Outlet.
Yes.
What that's going to look like in the heart of the project? It's the anchor tenant.
Yes.
And you may or may not be aware that this community has, I don't want to use the wrong term, been starved for a great grocer that's within the community for many years. And there's a large segment of the community that has been very active in advocating for improvements in this regard. And you probably have heard about that. So the news about Grocery Outlet is sort of trickling out. And maybe we could have a more descriptive opportunity here with you to tell us a little bit more about that.
Sure, of course, we'd be happy to. So, yeah, I was going to say interestingly, but it was pretty difficult going through it. But we are now on our third grocer. And this has been such a long process that we had a grocer five years ago when this process started, and then they went away when the project got delayed because of the redevelopment agency fiasco. We had a second market we went way down the road with, and then we thought we had a done deal with them. We were at the lease and they ended up backing out. So we ended up with Grocery Outlet, which was not available when we first started this process. And thank goodness, because they ended up being, by far, I think, the best option of the three that we discussed that we went down the road with. They are, they don't have a newer building in the, anywhere in San Diego County, so it's hard to go point to them and say, hey, that's a great-looking building. There isn't one, this will be a great-looking building. But from a user standpoint, they're fabulous. They're out of Berkeley. They're a fairly large chain, been very profitable for many, many years up and down the coast of California. And this is exactly the kind of community I like to be in. And so it's really tailor-made for the, for this community and the kind of merchandise that this community will want to purchase. Like I said, they have a big organics division that they have more recently put in place that will be real exciting, will be one of the first ones down here. that will be real exciting and be one of the first ones down here. So I, I think that the community is going to really embrace them. I think, you know, the, the name, I think, is a, is a, not the best name for really what they do, frankly. I mean, it is, it is a little bit of a lower price type alternative, but because of their organic offerings and their health offerings, it's not like an outlet type grocer. So I don't think the name really is an accurate reflection of what they do, although it is reasonably priced. And so I think there's, unfortunately, I, we do have a big description of them in our, in our groundbreaking announcement. That gives you even more detail than that, but I probably would know there's stuff about them to be dangerous to probably just try to describe their business model. But they do do a bit, pretty big full, full offering, sixteen thousand feet. So it's, it's a large store. By way of example, most of the Trader Joe's you see are about twelve thousand feet. And this is sixteen thousand feet, so it's bigger than typical Trader Joe's. So they do have a more diverse offering.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Bragg.
Thank you, Colton, for being here and your partner there in the back, Estine. It's so good to see you here again. I can't thank you enough. I have been here the longest on this council and remember when we, you know, and all of the iterations that we went through with this project and the changes and every time making it better. And every time we would offer up something, you would react to it and take it to a higher level. So some of the, the things that you were talking about, the salute to the military and, and just all of the changes all along the project have been wonderful. You're sticking with us through this. And, you know, the community, I think, has forgotten how long and arduous this has been, the whole redevelopment process and the absolute nightmare that we went through in this with the State Department of Finance. So that we are at this point that you have stood here again and announced, you know, a groundbreaking. This is going to be a monumental day for us in Imperial Beach. I personally cannot wait. And some of the things that, and I shop at a grocery outlet at Park and Market. So I'm very familiar with they, with what they have to offer. I think our community is going to be extremely pleased. The, again, the attention to detail about the wall there, you know, making it more anti-graffiti, more pleasing to the eye. Those are things that the neighbors have talked about in this area, things that the community has wanted. So again, thank you for listening and always hearing what we have to say. And the courtyard, I don't, Ed, if you could put up, Mr. B, if you could put up that description of the, that, that slide that has the courtyard, you know, that really is going to be a destination location. It's a, it's multi-purpose. I can just see this really flourishing. And it was one of the things that we were trying to accomplish in this part of town. So again, Mr. Sudbury, thank you so much. Estine, again, thank you. And I can't wait until April twentieth, believe me.
Right. I appreciate those words.
Mr. Sudbury, yeah, I wanted to thank you. And we actually had a chance to meet last year in Las Vegas, the Shopping Center Convention. And this whole process for me has been like a business school course and retail development. And more importantly, I think, combined with public, a public policy course, because with the whole issue of redevelopment. So I want to thank your company for sticking with us. I'm very familiar with your, your company. I shop at some of your projects, such as the one in Eastlake, which I think is really well done. More importantly, I've really become acquainted with your company's philosophy of community engagement and, and really, really being a, a bridge to the community. And I really appreciate the way that your company works for the community. I think it's really, really exemplary. So thank you for that. More importantly, I think this project is top-notch design. I thank my colleagues for approving that. More importantly, I think this plaza function is something that I see in that mid-city area. We have a lot of teens in that area, a lot of seniors in that area. And I think they're going to gravitate to using this. And I think it's going to be a wildly successful project. I live more than 500 feet away and you'll see me walking here with my shopping bags. I come from an old-school Grocery Outlet family, so no problem buying affordable groceries. And I have shopped at Grocery Outlet and I can buy my chia seeds and flaxseed for my smoothies, as well as coffee and, you're right, the organic food. And good deals on vitamins as well. So it's good for my post-workout smoothies. So anyway, I want to thank you guys and I'm looking forward to getting this going and inaugurating it. I thought, by the way, your press release was absolutely really well-written, so really well-done. So, and it was picked up by the San Diego Union Tribune. So anyway, with that, I think we're done with questions and we can move on to... Oh, I'm sorry. Are we done?
Yeah.
And any, any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. You need to fill out a blue speaker slip. I'm sorry? Yeah, sure, you can come up. Yeah, just make sure you state your name and you have three minutes. Say your name and address, please.
Carson Dahlak, seven, six, nine, seven Street. And I've been around quite a while. I was here for the last project. And I only ask that you look at that alley. Hopefully this is a, a project that's going to serve IB for a very long time and is successful. That usually means a lot of deliveries, which is probably going to use that alley. So if we're not, it's not?
No. Yeah, that's a really great point. One of the things we've required the applicant to do is that all deliveries must be made onsite. They, they will not use the alleys for delivery. So they are, they have shown us the truck route for deliveries. They should not be using the alley for any deliveries of any of the businesses.
My only concern was that, that alley would get beaten up very quickly over time and this Imperial Beach would be paying for that. So I look forward to the project. I live very close and thank you for the good work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other public comments? Oh, Jack Fisher, I mean. Who I know lives very close.
About as close as you can get to the public, to the, to the project. Jack Fisher, seven, six, one, eighth Street. I'm going to kind of take a stab out here and say that Mr. Sudbury nor anybody on the city council probably drives down that alley as much as I do. After the announcement came down about just kind of fixing the flaws over it, I drove down today after work, went very slow, took my time, looked. There's not one single inch when you go from Delaware all the way through till Ninth that doesn't have a crack. The section between Delaware and Eighth has some manhole covers that are very bumpy and lumpy. So I think that, you know, I agree that patching is pretty good. That's what I do at my house. I don't replace everything. I patch fix. But I think that it should be built to the city's standards and codes. And also I'd encourage that Estine and Mr. Sudbury have, have kind of a, a ground roots type of thing with the neighborhood. We meet in this forum all the time and he says his thing. We talk about things. But I think to be on property and to, to go over some of the issues I have, I emailed Andy some of the issues I have and concerns about the safety of the, the wall that's up there. And the alley is beautiful. However, just so you guys kind of get an idea that where the, the south entrance is, is probably fifteen feet from where the back corner of my property is. I'm very concerned about cars coming in, coming out of there at a high rate of speed, not making the turns, because it is very tight. As it sits right now, you cannot drive two cars down that alley comfortably. And his wall will be brand-new, made of nice materials. My fence is made of wood that's a little bit older. And so I would encourage that Sudbury and the city get involved with the neighborhood and make sure that our safety is, is number one. I don't care how many trucks have to dump dirt, how many hammers, jackhammers, whatever. I, I personally don't care how much dust. I've suffered with dust and rodents for the past few years. And I know one of my neighbors is here with me and she would probably relate the same thing. So again, our safety is our main concern for our families. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Mayor and council, I think Mr. Fisher brought up a good point. One of the things we didn't point out, we, again, we kept it relatively short. The section of round that he talked about in the intersection near Eighth, part of the alley will actually be replaced and that's one of them. There are sections of the alley that will need to be completely replaced because there will first be, there are some areas that have some underground work that will be done. And then there are some areas that are just dilapidated, need to be replaced. What we are suggesting is that some of the alley simply has, like he said, there's some cracking that can be filled with epoxy and, and concrete does that very well. But there are some areas that will need to be replaced. And we've looked at some of those and, and he mentioned one, which is the worst spot. And that section of the alley will actually be replaced. So I just wanted to clarify that. That's a great point.
While we're on the subject of the alley, looking at the, the schematic that's part of the report, top-down view, are there entrances from the alley into the project? Is, is that supposed to be, are there?
There, there is one. It's, and it is pulling it up right now. There is one entrance for vehicles and that would be located right in, in this area, right here. So this is the, this is the, the alley section. And this is going to be where the folks that would use this would primarily be from the southern end. So basically those residents. Yeah. You're, you're in the wrong, you're in the, you're in the wrong one. You need to go back to the staff report? Yep, there we go. So same location, the, the, some of the buildings had been modified. So here is a, a location where vehicles could get into the site. The primary accesses though, as Andy had talked about, are going to come off of Palm and off of Ninth. And so again, there's also going to then be a pedestrian access here that's going to be ADA compliant to get into the site. So those PEDs, whether they want to walk or bike, will have the ability to use this alley. And again, if you live in this area and you want to get to the site and you've got some shopping to do and more than just one bag, then you could drive here and then, and then exit back out through that area as opposed to have to go back out onto Ninth.
I mean, they could use their bicycle with, or their little cart.
They could use either.
Bags, okay.
That's right. So that's the, that's the only vehicular access that'd be in there. And as Andy had indicated, it's, it's purposefully designed this way to preclude, as the one gentleman had indicated, a lot of deliveries or anything like that. I mean, it's, it's designed specifically to be difficult for anybody other than the air, the folks in this area to want to utilize it.
Good. With that, thank you very much, everybody, for those presentations. We appreciate you guys coming down, Estine and Mr. Sudbury. Appreciate it a lot. Okay. We'll close the public hearing and I would like to entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2016-7684, authorizing modifications to certain conditions of approval provided in Resolution 2011-7131 related to improvements and adjacent to the alley. Is there a motion? Please vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
If I'm correct, you were trying to tell me that I missed the motion on the Chandler Asset Investment Report. Is that right? Was that what you were saying when you guys were talking? Oh, okay. All right. Well, I did forget to do that motion, is that right? I'm, I'm, on my cheat sheet here, I'm told I'm, I'm supposed to do a motion to accept the biannual investment. Should we, I'm going to make sure I'm doing everything correctly or do we not need to do that?
We should, we could do a motion now or after you're finished. Did you already do the vote on this one? Okay. Then yes, you could go ahead and do the vote on.
Okay, I want to make sure I'm doing everything correctly. Okay, so we're going to do, go back to five, one and just entertain them. I would like to entertain a motion to accept the biannual investment report from Chandler Asset Management. Is there? Please vote. Okay.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Oh, you will, don't worry. Yeah, thank you. Yep. Item 42, Public Hearing and Adoption of Resolution Number 2016-7679 for Transnet Local Street Improvement Program of Projects for Fiscal Years 2017 through 2021. I declare the public hearing open. Is this the one?
Yeah, this was one of the ones.
Are you going to make that announcement, right?
Sure. On item 4.2, Mayor Dina is going to recuse himself due to a potential conflict of interest because we were just notified before the council meeting that he is within 500 feet of one of the streets. So just from a precautionary standpoint.
Okay. Turning it over to my colleague.
Okay, are we ready for the staff report on 4.2?
Okay.
Mayor Protem, you, you should go ahead and open the public hearing.
Oh. Yeah, let me see here. I'd like to declare the public hearing open for item 4.2. Public hearing and adoption of resolution number 216-7679 for Transnet Local Street Improvement Program of Projects for Fiscal Years 2017 through 2021. So the Public Works Director Levine will give the staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And council members, biannually, every two years at this time of year, we are required through the Transnet Extension Ordinance to update the streets that we are proposing to or the projects we're proposing to do with Transnet funds for the next five years and, and most particularly for the next two years. And the, the list of streets that were listed here are primarily the ones that were from the last pavement management study that was done a few years ago. And we're, we're updating that study and it, we're expecting that report soon. But in the interim, we need to have this to Sandag by tomorrow. So this is, so what I'm, what I, what I chose to do to help depict or show the streets that are, are listed on that plan, the five-year plan, are on this city map. And those that are, which are highlighted are the streets that are on that list. And again, those are the streets that were assessed in the most distressed condition of this, in the city from a 2008 survey done. Like I say, there's a study that's, that should be reporting out here in the next month. And if the study that comes in a next month or so suggests that some of the priorities are changed then from, from 2008, we can make changes to this. And there, there, every quarter, there's an opportunity to update those lists. So what I'm asking tonight is for you to approve this list of, of streets that be submitted tomorrow and that we'll send the resolution, which is also required, to Sandag before the end of this fiscal year, which is also a requirement. Thank you very much, Mr. Levine, for that report. Council members, do we have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Levine. Do you anticipate any changes from, on, from the report in 2008? Any shifting of priority streets?
It wouldn't surprise me. There are a few. I'm, I'm not prepared to suggest which streets might be because the survey we did, you know, 2008 is, we've, we've accomplished and, or let me rephrase that. We've overlaid or improved those, all of the streets that were listed as the worst. And from the 2008 setting, we've just been working down categorically or systematically down through the list from the most, needing the most improvement to, you know, to... If you remember last time, Ms. Bragg, we had a list of streets that were, had a rating of seventy or less. And that was kind of the goal we wanted to do is to try to bring all the streets up close to seventies we could. And we've been working through that list. And I don't know what the analysis will show when we come to this next one, but hopefully we'll have a better, generally a, a less streets that are below seventy than we had before. You can see on this street here and then it's a future project. I mean, on this map here is that the Elm Avenue is a purple line going from Seacoast all the way to Seventh is a project that we're working on right now. And that's being funded through our TIP, our Transnet.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I had one question and I read somewhere in the report, I think, that the major expenditure is going to be on Thirteenth in the northern part. Is that, is that this agenda item or am I thinking about another one? There is, listed in, on your attachment two are the categories of projects. It's IB2, IB11, 12, et cetera.
Right.
The grant monies that we've acquired, been awarded, the Active Transportation Grant, which is the Thirteenth Street and Bike Way Village is, is a, is the largest grant we've got. And that's for that, that, that cat, that project is the one that you're, I think, referring to.
Correct.
So it's just listed there as, as grant money that's been dedicated or awarded to the city for that. So it's just listed there as, as grant money that's been dedicated or awarded to the city for that project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Levine. So no further council questions, Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips on this item?
No speaker slips.
Okay, in that case, I would like to close the public hearing. And I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 2016 dash 7679, authorizing city staff to submit attachment two of the staff report to Sandag, designating the street segments in attachment two as projects eligible for street resurfacing and ADA pedestrian bicycle improvements between fiscal years 2017 and 2021, using the revenues from the Transnet Local Street and Roads Fund. Can I get a motion? Could we please have a, a oral vote, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
Motion carried by the following votes, ayes, Bill Bray, Patton, Bragg, Spriggs, disqualified Dina due to a potential conflict of interest.
Mr. Mayor Protem, we would, we would also ask that you take out of order item 5.2 and hear that report because the mayor also has a conflict on the Elm Avenue item because he is, once again, his residence is within 500 feet of that project. So rather than go back and forth, we just inform the mayor that we will take up item 5.2 as well, if that's okay. Again, if that's okay by the council. Okay.
We don't, this is not a public hearing, so we don't have to convene a public hearing. So on this item, I'd like to turn to Public Works Director Levine again and ask him for the staff report.
Yes, sir, Mayor Protem and council members. This is a, a street improvement project that you saw a few times in the past, most recently last June. And it is a project that is an overlay, street overlay on Elm Avenue from Seacoast Drive all the way to Seventh Street. And in the blocks between Fourth and Seventh, there are specific improvements or aesthetic modifications to the street which are primarily to provide students at the, both the elementary schools, this elementary school district and the high school, better accommodations for pedestrians, bicycles and vehicle drop-offs and traffic calming. You saw this image in the June presentation to you. And I don't propose to go through it unless you, you want to. I just want to assure you that the images you saw, the colors you saw and approved in, in this presentation in June remain the same. And you asked at that June meeting to make sure that you had an opportunity to see what we were doing before we actually go out to bid. I'm, the city is prepared to advertise next Thursday, a week from tomorrow. And we have a bid out for three or four weeks. And hopefully we'll be bringing a proposal back to you in May for awarding a contract to start construction. That should, depending upon the contractor and, and other considerations, you should see construction this summer, hopefully July, June or July. And it is programmed for engineer's estimate is about 180 days to complete the project. And with that, I'm available for questions. There is no request for approval of resolution or anything like that. We just wanted to make sure that you were in on where we were and that we're ready to go and, and follow up with your requests that we come back to before we advertise.
Thank you very much, Mr. Levine, we do have a couple of questions, but I just wanted to clarify a point first in the report. It mentioned that the financial financials for this project were going to be presented before the report. The breakdown of the cost for the various funds has not been completed, but will provided at or before the March 16 city council.
I didn't say that. I did say that. I don't, I did not bring it with me. The project is divided into three funding sources. One is the ATP grant, which was $709,000. Second was the Transnet dollars, which we had committed 700,002. And then the improvements for the intersection at Ninth, Fifth Street because of the sewer lift station there in the middle of that intersection, we're trying to get it out of the, out of the water zone or the flood zone, was being funded from sewer. The estimated sewer costs is somewhere around $250,000 to raise that and bring the drainage in around it because we have to change the storm drainage to be able to get through all of that. So you could see, if you add those numbers up, that's not the 2.1 million that's shown in your staff report. And depending upon where the bid comes in, we will be coming back and asking for funds to be put against that. And there should be funds, by my estimate, unless it goes over a 2.1 million that we're estimating in the Transnet dollars that we have yet to spend that are still in our account.
Thank you very much, Mr. Levine. Councilmember Bragg, did you have some questions?
Thank, were there any speaker slips on this? No, okay. When we heard this item before, there were a number of speaker slips and it dealt with perhaps the removal of some parking spaces, I'm trying, I'm trying to remember.
Sure.
But I don't, it's been a while, I've slept since then. So maybe you could touch on that a little bit and also touch on your outreach into the community a little bit because I know there was a lot of discussion with community members and, and your department, Mr. Levine.
Yes. The project will remove parking on the south side of Elm Avenue that currently exists there between Fourth and Seventh. Now, there's not, there's no parking between Fourth and the high school. Anyway, it's already red. There, but there is parking from basically the east side of high school, plus some in front of the high school over to Connecticut. That's, that will not be there any further. The high school is, is supportive of it, the schools are supportive of it. They have committed to the community that they will do everything they can to encourage the students and teachers to park onsite. There's plenty of parking onsite for the students and the teachers. There is, I think it's five parking stalls left in the front for guests and ADA. The rest of the existing parking that's showing there in front of the high school will be used as a drop-off for students to try to hopefully get the kids off the street, the cars off the street when they're picking up and dropping off their children. The, the, my memory is that the neighbors were not pushing back on the no parking on this, on the south side of the street. Their concerns was the parking that's in front of their property on the north side. And again, the schools have committed to try to, we can't prevent parking, but they've, they're committed to encouraging and promoting park onsite on school property and not on, not on the public street.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. So in essence, some of this plan is about behavior modification in the form of, like you said, parking in the parking lot instead of out front. So that the other design of this project is safety?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and, and encouraging other modes of transportation because with, with an 18, a 16-foot wide walkway on the south side between the school property and the, and the, and the roadway, it should, it should accommodate a lot more safety in terms of, and other forms of transportation, skateboards and bicycles and so on. And that's, that's our hope. And, and we, the, the schools believe, the high school particularly believes that they, people will use it and they, they, they're claiming that there is a lot of, when you go by there, you can see a lot of bicycles tied up to their, to their fences and, and then some of the, we got, they've got bicycle parking onsite. And we're, and we're enhancing that as well as part of this project.
Okay. That's the real message of this project, I believe. So I would like to solicit from our editor of our online publication, Mr. Via, that that's the real message of this project. If, so I know that, Mr. Via, audience isn't aware, he has our city newsletter online and that's the real story here. So I'm hoping that the, you know, the community embraces it as well as the council and the high school has. I'm excited to see this project come to fruition.
I, I did send an email out to those who participated in the prior outreach meetings we've had. But admittedly, I didn't send it out until this week. So it's, I mean, I didn't give them a lot of time to, to gather themselves together and be here tonight. And that's on me.
I accept that and I do appreciate that because like I said at the, at previous meetings, we did have a lot of people here to, to discuss this project. So thank you for keeping them updated, Mr. Levine.
Mr. Patton?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. One on the, the bike path, I know a number of ninth graders, new ninth graders, my son being one, who rides, who will be riding down that path. Can you explain to me the path from Fourth going down Elm to the high school? Where the drop-off zone, what happens to the bike path? Does it morph into that drop-off zone or do they jump onto the sidewalk or?
They, the path is on the south side off the roadway, on the south side between the curb and the fence.
So that'd be, that's the pink, the pinkish?
Yes, where you see the, the laterally coming from, I don't know if I can make this work or not, yeah, see here's Fourth. The pinup pointer is that the, that's that 16-foot walk, walkway comes on down and the, and the, even though it's showing curvilinear, it's, it's a, a solid surface. So whether people wind their way back and forth down there, it's hard to say what kids will end up, oops, I did it. And then when you get to Fifth Street here in front of the high school, then the curve, the, the proposed pathways falls along closer to the schoolyard and this is where the kids would sit or wait for parents. And here's your, your five stalls for parking, this is a drop-off for students. And then I'll continue on to the east on down the lower slide you see coming across in front of Carolina, across Connecticut and on into Seventh Street.
Well, I think that drop-off zone's a good idea. I mean, I'm a school teacher and drop-off and pickup is usually pretty quick. And I think.
I hope so.
I think that should work.
That was our thinking.
I think that should work pretty good. Now, I know some of the residents that live directly in front of the school after talking to some of them, they would like to be notified a little about any major traffic disruptions that might, they might encounter, like no surprises.
During construction.
Yeah, like I'm pulling out my lot today and, well, I didn't know that's closed. Is there any way? I know there's ways that we know some things are gonna happen.
Sure.
Is there any way that we could do a weekly notification or whatever you think's appropriate?
Yeah.
For those residents, just to be good neighbors?
When there's, when there are contractors, when they have, you know, they're gonna close that street or car, close part of the street, they always, they're required to make notifications of it. There's also signs along the streets saying, you know, it's no parking this couple of days because we're going to be replacing concrete or, or whatever, trenching. There is certainly going to be interference because we're, we are, we are putting in storm drain lines. We've got to modify the sewer pump station, force main discharge out of there in order to get all the underground lines to not interfere with each other. Very soon, SDGNE is going to be relocating the, the gas lines that going through between Fifth and Fourth. And they, they'll have, they'll, they're required to notify the residents as well. So there's, there's gonna be a lot of inter, interference with normal business for six months or off and on between six months.
So I guess what I'm saying is, anything that we could do, because I know contractors, sometimes they'll just put a sign up and say, hey, you're on your own, is there anything a little more tame that we could do once in a while to let them know this is what's going on? This is where we're at, there's not that many houses, it wouldn't be that hard. Just a matter of writing the document. Just, just a thought.
Yeah. Sure, I think that shouldn't be a problem. We, we the contractors typically give us a, a, a two-week look ahead. And so if we made that online and given them what, what it is or just put it on an email with address out to them, although not, there's a lot of them in this project area who have not attended any meetings, so I don't have their email address, but I can do both, right? I can put it on, online and I can also put it in email.
You know, if this, that would take too much for your time, I think that'd be okay to do. Okay, thank you, Ms. Levine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Mr. Levine, perhaps we could use our own digital sign and put it out there periodically throughout the construction period? And perhaps we could also utilize the marquee at Marvista High School? I know every time I go by, every time I drive down Elm Avenue, I look at that marquee sign. So it's possible that maybe the school district.
That sign is, is seen his last days. I think this project is, is, at their request, is, is being removed. And I'm not sure they have money to replace it. But until that happens, we can do it.
Okay, just trying to get the word out there.
We do have a public speaker and I'd like to ask Paula Hall if she'd like to come forward and make three minutes of comments, up to three minutes of comments. And please understand, we aren't allowed under the Brown Act to respond to you directly.
I understand all that. My name's Paula Hall and I'm the board member from Sweetwater Union High School District that represents this area along with the areas of Nestor and South San Diego. So I am concerned about this item because I don't think this ever was discussed at our board meeting. I'm not, we've had some change in our district in the last year and we were, all five board members newly elected in November of 2014. The first six months were transitional in leadership at our district for a number of reasons. One of those changes was the, the Chief Facilities and Construction Officer, Tom Calhoun, who is no longer with the district. I don't know who you engaged with at the district, but I would have, I would have thought that we would have had some kind of, this is a pretty major change. So I'm not, I would like to have more information about it. Number one, our school, we're trying to make improvements and change to that school. In fact, on Monday night, we voted and passed a plan for facilities changes across our school because we're receiving some more proceeds from a bond issue. So we'll be doing major construction at the school. I think that has to be considered. Also, the fact that you're, you're planning, you're making plans for marquee, which is not easily replaced and is very costly and is relied upon to communicate with our, our community. So I, I think there's changes here that need to be reviewed and discussed with our new facilities people. We have a new Director of Construction and I know he'd be able to meet with you, has a lot of experience with schools and construction and what's needed because there's a lot of costs, not, not just with what goes on with the marquee, but certainly the DSA and school district construction is very much, has to look at all the plans and review everything. and school district construction is very much, has to look at all the plans and review everything. And so in that respect, I would request that you inform us how you, how you engage with the school.
Sure. Very much.
And the board of trustees of that school.
Thank you very much for your comments. I think in light of the fact that this is directly on the agenda, and that in the staff report, there is a history of the engagement with the school district and school staff, our school district staff, that it would be appropriate for Mr. Levine to recite some of that history.
Sure. And I'd be glad to also meet with him at some future time. We started this effort and, well, even back further, we did a, we had a grant to receive, to study mobility around the city, walkability, bicycling, through a grant from Caltrans, environmental justice grant for 100K. And we engaged the school, all the school districts in it, and had a number of workshops. It took about two years, and there was a study completed, and it was made available to all parties. What date? I think it was 12, January of 12, I think it was, when the study was put out, completed and adopted by the city. And in that study was the concerns and a need for better access for pedestrians along the school, school frontages. And we engaged the city and the schools, City Council and the schools, about applying for a grant to be able to do some of that. And we were successful. We got permission to do it, a concurrence to do it, and we were successful. And we were working with Sweetwater School District staff. We had a number of meetings with them. A lady called, named Linda Clark, who's, I understand, is no longer there, was very active. I think she was at every meeting we had. We ended up with four planning meetings from July through September in 13, if I remember right. And then we applied for the grant in 14. And am I in the right pages, right ears? And we received the grant in, I think it was October of 15. Was it 14? Okay. But we didn't get the money. Yeah, we didn't get the money allocated to us to be able to start work until, I think it was February of 15, something like that. And then we had some more community meetings with the neighbors and the schools. And as you mentioned, Mr. Calhoun, he had been with, he had not been to the meetings, but I went to his, your district and briefed him. And Linda Clark was, again, also almost at every one of those meetings. So the principal, yeah, the principal at the high school, both, both the current one, Mr. Gonzalez, is that right? And then the one before him, were very active in this and met with them, had a meeting at their school. Mr. Gonzalez has been with us most recently month and a half ago, two months ago. So I apologize if there's been, you know, I haven't done a good job of communicating, but we've been trying, but maybe not the right way.
Thank you. Well, Mr. Levine, I think there's been a lot of interaction, as you've described already. But, you know, we do want to have a, maintain a good working relationship with the board. Is there a, we're being asked by yourself and the staff to take action, to authorize you to issue the request for proposals. Are we on a, can we give you another week or two to consult before we come back, maybe at our next meeting? Or are we under an external sort of time pressure to move ahead at this point?
We, we are under some pressure. Two weeks is probably not going to, or three weeks, I think is the next meeting. We're not, is not going to violate that pressure. We had to ask for an extension for the expenditure of the funds because we had promised, or we had stated we would be ready to advertise last fall. And because of all the conflicts with utilities and trying to coordinate the various things, it just, it just hadn't, we didn't got that far. So we had to ask for an extension for a year. And that year, we were probably, I think, still another eight months or 10 months left in that extension before we get.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any thoughts about, do you have any thoughts about what the appropriate action ought to be at this point? Should we proceed or?
Well, I think, I think one of the challenges is we, again, we did try to involve the school district all the way through this and the principals at the schools. The, and this is the, the product that we, that we all settled on. The problem I have is if we go back and change this now, we're going to need to go back to the neighborhood and start over again. Because again, if you'll remember at your last meeting, they were adamant that we bring forth this without any changes. And so we, all I would suggest is that if we make changes, we need to kind of go back now and re-educate the residents again.
Well, I'm not suggesting that we make changes. I'm suggesting that we give Mr. Levine and his staff an opportunity to brief any new senior personnel in the school district about what's, what we're about to do with respect to the RFP and the process. But, and I think that's a matter of courtesy. I'm not sure that we need to go back to square one and redesign this project. I don't think that they're asking for that. I think they're asking for, you know, to be brought up to date on, on what's going on and, and what will be involved in the project. That's, that's my understanding. So Councilmember Bragg, did you have a comment?
Ms. Hall, I certainly do appreciate you taking time out of your day to be here with us, and we welcome you. And as always, we have Chris Brown, who I think has a, has a reserved seat back there in that row and is at almost every single one of our meetings. And it's difficult, it's a difficult balance when you're newly elected, although you've been there a number of years now, not, not a great length of time, but it's hard to, to come into a situation, you know, and, and just like we heard with the previous agenda item, that project has been going on for five years. So some of, you know, newer council members will say, well, gee, I didn't know about this, where is it at? So I certainly do appreciate you being here this evening. But I think that we have demonstrated that we have been a constant partner with the school districts, and our outreach has been constant as well. You know, I think that, I honestly don't think we need to take any more time, even, you know, if Mr. Levine said, it wouldn't really add any more pressure. But I think that we have done our due diligence. And certainly, Mr. Levine can forward a package to you, or if he would like to, you know, if you'd like to meet with him personally. But I honestly don't see the need for any more meetings on this. I think that we have provided, like I said, I think we've done our due diligence and certainly do appreciate all of the, your predecessors being there with us at the table and our neighbors as well. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Patton?
I think you did mention you had some construction projects upcoming. And if you're not aware of those construction projects, at least you should find out what those are. So we could work together. I think that's big. And I think you will find, is it Ms. Hall? This has real good curb appeal for any school. Wow. Any school to get this handed on the silver platter? That's, that's pretty awesome, you know? So I think you'll be pleasantly pleased, I hope, I hope. Okay. Okay, so that's my thought. I think if you could just meet and just kind of touch bases and say, we're doing this on this date, we're doing this on this date, and let's just work, make sure we work together.
Mr. Patton, your suggestion might entail offering more time, like I said, two weeks till our next meeting, or it might not. If Mr. Levine discovers that the construction schedule that the school has in mind that we may not be aware of is taking place at the same time, and there's some conflict, as you suggested is a possibility, then maybe, maybe some, may have some implications on some small amendments to the RFP that are necessary to adjust to that fact. It may not delay anything, but I don't know. What's your thought on that, Mr. Levine?
I, I personally would like-
Staging areas, for example, might be in conflict if, if there's some major construction on the north end of the school.
The staging would not be on school property, and their staging would probably not be on our property. So it, I don't know that that staging as a specific example would be an issue, but there's, obviously, their work would be, need to coordinate with ours, we'd have to work with it. I would like to proceed with advertising and in the same time, try to get a time to schedule a briefing to whoever, the council, their council or their board would like to be briefed. And if we have to extend the advertisement for a period, you know, another week or two in order to make, make sure we're everything, or if it turns out that we've, we've got a conflict that's unresolved, we can't resolve it, then we can always pull up and, you know, pull the advertisement and not, not proceed. If we can get out now, we have a good chance of finishing this. If 180 days works, we have a good chance of finishing this ad or be at the, at the holidays in December. If we delay it, then we're going to be trying to construct during the holidays and delays through that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Levine. I don't see, oh, yes, if you don't mind.
Thank you. Just a quick comment, Mr. Levine, you know how I really dislike stop signs? I'm not seeing any, the two new ones displayed on the, on the schematics that we have up front. Have we pulled those or are they still planned?
Stop signs are still planned.
They're still planned. Is there, I've said time and time again that I've been a, you know, I'm not a big fan of new stop signs going in on Elm. Is there any way that we can hold off on putting, when this project actually proceeds? It's a lot easier to put them in than take them out, the two new ones? Or is it one new one on the east side, Connecticut right there?
There, yeah, there's, yes, yes, sir, there's one on Connecticut.
There's one. If we could postpone, putting that in until we can actually see how the narrowing of the street actually acts, preferably, I would like to see how this tabletop actually controls traffic as well. But I'm in agreement with Councilmember Bragg that I think we should go ahead and put this out for bid, and all that, that'll actually, my motion is to approve the preceding advertisement of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Bill Bray. Is there a second? That's a slightly different motion than the one that staff is requesting, which is to approve the final scope and be authorized to proceed with the request for proposals. Does that present any problem as far as what staff is being asked to do?
If you want to modify the motion to be more consistent with the staff recommendation, move staff recommendation, that's fine. That might-
I'll move, I'll move staff recommendation, and if Mr. Patton just whispered in my ear, if you'd like to do a friendly amendment.
About modifying the vote, Ms. Levine would need some support and appropriate people to-
Right. Okay? And that's a second? All right.
Motion carried by the following votes. Councilmembers Bill Bray, Patton, Bragg, Spriggs voted aye, disqualified the Dina due to a potential conflict of interest.
I am going to make an announcement. I didn't eat dollar tacos, and I caught up on my Facebook for the first time and my email for the first time in a long time. So anyway, I know you guys were worried about that. That's why you hurried up really quickly. Where are we at? Okay. 4.23, right, okay, sorry. Thank my colleagues for taking care of all that stuff for me. Okay, item 4.3, resolution number 2016-7674, resolution number 2016-7675, and resolution number 2016-7676, public hearing regarding formation of an underground utility district, 1,300 block Donix Avenue, Underground Utility District, 1,300 block Elm Avenue, Underground Utility District, and 900,000 blocks Fern Avenue, Underground Utility District. I declare the public hearing open. Public Works Director Levine will give a report.
Mayor, council members, as you saw at your last meeting, you set the state to establish a public hearing for three districts, these, those being what the mayor just read. And we sent out a notice to all of property owners within those three districts. And we've had, other than tonight, we had one person come in as an owner in that area. We've had no, no calls, no concerns, no questions about it. Again, this would be putting the utilities, area utilities, in the 1,300 block of Donix, 1,300 block of Elm, and the 900, 100 block of Fern in front of the VIP Village preschool. And this project is intended principally that the 1,300 block of Elm and Donix to be coincident with the undergrounding of City San Diego's area on, on the east of 13th Street. I expect you're not going to see this undergrounding actually happen until probably at least 2019, and it may be 2020 or 2021, depending upon how our funds accumulate and the program that high school, I mean, City San Diego has. So I'm recommending approval of the three resolutions establishing these districts.
There any city council discussion? Okay, then I want to close the public hearing, and there are three separate resolutions, I need three separate motions. So do we, do I read them all, and then we do motions? I do each one and didn't do a motion? City council votes on each one after the fact?
They're identical. I think if you read the first one, after those, you can just do the next few by number.
Okay. But we have to vote on each one of them?
Correct. Individually on each one.
Okay. So we'll start with the first one. I would like to entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 2016-7674, establishing the formation of an underground utility district, 1,300 block avenue, I'm sorry, 1,300 block Donix Avenue, Underground Utility District. Please vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great. I would like to do a motion to adopt resolution number 2016-7675. Is there a motion? And I would like to entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 2016-7676.
Wait, motion carried unanimously, sorry.
Sorry, I'm ahead of the game. So anxious to move this forward.
Okay.
Okay, so please vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great. We have item number 5.3, and that's resolution number 2016-7638, setting time and place for public hearings to consider adoption of the five-year FY17 through FY21 sewer service charge and sewer capacity fee. And- sewer service charge and sewer capacity fee. And City Manager Andy Hall will give a report on item number 5.3.
Mayor and council, we have a request tonight to establish a date for a public hearing to consider an increase to our sewer fees. I will start by reminding you that tonight, what you're really being asked to do is to set that public hearing date, but we also wanted to give you a little bit of background information, given the discussion you had at one of your past council meetings regarding our sewer fees. Oh, boy, cow. That's moving a project forward, Mayor. First, the city council has already established policies for your sewer system. And some of those policies that now go into generating your sewer user fee include a $2 million emergency reserve fund. And that's in case anything happens in the sewer system. We have money set aside so that we can go correct those and, and we have money that we wouldn't have to go and raise rates at that time. We also need to generate enough revenue to cover the operations in the sewer department. And then we also need to generate enough revenue to do the capital improvements that are needed, pipe replacement, updating the lift stations, all the things that go into making sure that we properly maintain the sewer system. By using your policies, we have come up with what we are recommending for what the rate needs to be for your, for your monthly sewer fee. And the chart that you see there is if you don't make adjustments in 2017, you can see what the rates will be. The base fee would be $12.58. The average user fee would be $42.18. What the study indicates, and remember that we're studying not only, right now, we need to make sure that we rebuild your emergency fund. It's below $2 million, so we want to rebuild that. And then we also need to make sure that we are putting enough money into capital improvements, that we can get the capital improvements done in a meaningful time. And then we also have to take in mind what's happening with the Point Loma treatment and what's happening with the pure water system. So our rates reflect all of those important things. And we believe that the rates that you see in front of you will allow us to satisfy the city council policies within a period of five years. And so within five years, we would have that $2 million fund balance. We would be generating enough in our CIP to complete the projects, and we will have addressed the pure water system and what's happening in the city of San Diego. So what you see reflected there from 2017 through 2021 are the projected increases in the base sewer fee for an average single-family dwelling. Now, of course, the sewer fee varies a little bit whether you're in a multifamily unit, or perhaps if you're in a commercial building, but we thought probably the easiest way to discuss it would be for your average single-family dwelling. So that is one portion of the sewer fee that we would be asking you to have a public hearing on and consider adjusting your fee on May 4. The second part of that is the capacity fee or the impact fee for the sewer system. When the city council originally adopted this, they only adopted the portion of the fee that was attributable to the improvements in the city of Imperial Beach. What they did not adopt were the improvements or the prior improvements for the larger metro system that includes all of our transportation mainlines, trunk lines that go to the Point Loma Treatment Plant. And so essentially, if you wanted to look at it this way, the existing residents in the community have been subsidizing the new growth in the community because we did not charge the metro portion of the impact fee. Remember, the impact fee or the capacity fee is only charged to new development. And so essentially, whatever portion of that we don't cover with the impact fee, that's covered by the sewer department or the existing rate users. So we are suggesting that we increase the capacity fee to 4775 plus the CPI for the years 2013 through 2016. Again, this is for new growth only. And I should also point out that where there was existing development, let's say the new hotel site, you're familiar with that because we've been looking at it a little bit. There were, there were apartments there previously. So when those apartments were torn down and a new hotel may be built there at some point in the future, that applicant would get credit for the amount of sewer that was in those apartments. So, so anything that's currently has, that they've paid for over the years, they'll get credit for that. It's only the new portion or the new growth that would be charged, the capacity fee. So again, the summary of the request tonight is to establish the public hearing date, and I have May 1st on this slide. It's actually May 4. We're asking the city council to adopt resolution 2016-7683, which establishes the public hearing date for consideration of adjustments to the sewer fee for May 4, 2016. And then one final note, remember sewer fees can only be used in the sewer department. They can't be used to augment any other government activities. So these sewer fees will stay in the sewer department to make sure that we are operating and maintaining the sewer system properly.
Are there any questions? And just to be clarified, and again, we're just approving holding a public hearing. So we'll be discussing the proposed increases at the public hearing.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
I don't see any-
I move to, I'm making a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, another water issue. Resolution number, item 5.4, resolution number 2016-7673, adding Triangle Park water reduction and pedestrian public transportation enhancements to the CIP two-year implementation plan, FY15, 16, and FY16, 17, accepting a $65,000 donation from California American Water Company and appropriating $95,000 from the Prop A Extension Ordinance Program fee towards the park design and construction. And Public Works Director Levine will give a report on the items.
Mayor, council members, you were presented a check tonight for covering part of this , Goss. It's a, let me see if I can just bring it up. We have, okay, we're, we're proposing to take Triangle Park, which is that little triangle area between Palm, Highway 75 and Seventh, just to the east of the Seaside Service Station, and adjacent to the Breakwater Project, and converting this grass landscape area to a hydroscape area. The project includes, or the idea, the concept includes making it walkable to get across there. There is a bus shelter or a bus stop proposed as part of the Highway 75 master plan. So proposing to at least accommodate that is, if that ever comes to pass. Making it basically some low, low-lined trees and shrubs with decomposed granite in the landscaped area with drip irrigation or minimum water needs. We would retain the flagpole in there, maybe not exactly the same location, but we retain that. We retain the sculpture, one with wave sculpture that's on the Seventh Street side of the project. And we'd also maintain that mosaic, my brain has gone dead, mosaic image of the logo, city logo on the east, on the east end of it. And the, the idea that I, including in here is that you could, the, the potential for just being able to access the shopping center, the Sudbury Shopping Center in the future, when and if that's built and they, not when and if, when it's built, and, and if we wanted to create a crosswalk across there, we could include that as part of this project. I wanted to, my thought was that we should have sidewalk or walkways on all three sides. So people had whichever way they wanted to go, they could, they could accommodate that without walking through the landscape area. This is a concept. We'll put that more together with, with the project and come back later to make sure that we were designing it how you'd like. As, as you mentioned earlier, this is funded, proposed to be funded not only with the CalAM grant, but also with the RTCIP, Regional Transportation Congestion Improvement Program. The city has accumulated to date $95,000 and per your earlier adoption, the money can only be expended on Highway 75 or its adjacent property between Seventh and Ninth Street. So this, that meets, this meets that criteria.
Great. Do we have any public comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. If you want to, okay, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bragg.
Thank you. Mr. Levine, is that a new, is that going to be a new bus stop or is there currently one there right now? I can't remember.
It, it would be most, it would be most likely moving the one that's now currently at the Seaside Service Station there on the eastbound Highway 75 to this location. At least, that's the proposal.
But that's not part of that. That would be future remodeling of Palm Avenue.
That, it's contingent upon that aspect of it. And so it wouldn't be, but we'd like to make the hardscape to accommodate that if we needed to.
Exactly. And the reason why I bring that up is I know that we have finally, we had to go back to, to bid on the new bus shelters. They were quite not, they weren't up to par with what we had expected at MTS with one of our contractors. So that contract has been let out and approved again. But if we want a, one of the new bus shelters, we need to be putting in that request now, as soon as possible, because there, we're only allocated so many. So any of the, any of the new ones need to be requested very soon. So-
I, I would submit that's a, something that I would like to get direction on because prior councils were inclined to leave it low profile and not have it. That's why you see the, the surfboard benches around without the shelters because they wanted a lower profile image along the street. But I'm, I certainly go any way you'd like to go.
Okay. Well, I'm just going to describe the new bus shelters in, rather than the low profile, the new bus shelters are lighted. They're more convenient, they're much more pleasant to sit in if it's sunny or if it's raining. So it would be my advocacy that we go for the new shelter and not just the bench, because as you know, as we're, we're all aware, people ride and wait for the bus anytime night or day, whether it's dark or, you know, daylight. So obviously, the new ones with, with being lit are much more preferable.
So, Mr. Bill Bray?
Thank you. Just one question. What about the existing trees? I'm not seeing anything in the staff report in that area.
Yeah, I didn't. The, the large pine, if you've been by there recently, the, the second to the last limb broke off in the last windstorm we had. So all that was left is one sprig going up. And the arborists have been telling me it probably needed to come down anyway. So it's now just a stump. The palms that are around the sculpture, it would be my advocacy that they stay. But that's, I mean, it's, we'll probably give you a couple of options when we come back, just to let you decide how you want to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. And personally, I'd like to try and keep as many of the foliage that we have in that park. Takes quite a while to get a good tree to grow. And understandably about that pine, pine is notorious about when it breaks. It starts to rot and die anyway. So I understand that one. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Briggs?
Mr. Levine, thanks for the schematic. I think that we have to be, you know, be aware that this is kind of an iconic piece of land that is at the entrance to, sort of the entrance to Old Palm and IB proper from Route 75. And even for people passing by, it is, it is kind of an iconic symbol of Imperial Beach. I'm, I, I understand that we would want to have, if we're going to have a bus stop there, that we'd want to have it be a serviceable, a useful bus stop. But I'd be concerned that you explore the design of the, of the bus shelter that is now or going to become available. And if it's possible before any decision is made to bring it back, because my concern is that if it's, if it's imposing and lighted, it then becomes the central feature at night for this piece of property, and maybe even during the day, given that we're going to have low, it's going to be low-lying, it's going to be largely gravel and other environmentally sensitive landscape. And we just need to make sure that we give attention and consciousness to the aesthetic aspects of what we're doing here, as well as the public service aspects of what we're doing. So I wouldn't just go in and order one. I would actually take a look at it, possibly even bring it back to the council. This is our gate, one of our gateways. That's my only comment.
Yeah, I think, I want to thank my colleagues in the council for their good feedback. And obviously, as you said, this is a concept, so we'll come back with, you'll come back with a good design. And then more importantly, again, I think the, I saw Steve Vow, Samara Poway give a, talk about what they're doing in Poway to get rid of grass. And they're doing a big project to do this, saving them lots of money. So I think in the end, this will be a much more cost-effective public space for taxpayers. So I want to thank you for doing that. And more importantly, improving this area in, in anticipation of what's happening at Ninth and Palm. So anyone else, I know Cal-American's here, so thank you so much for the, making this investment and also doing what you can to help us save water. And we do, I guess our bill's to you. So our, our checks to you every month. So anyway, thank, we appreciate your, really, the very beginning, I think it was one of the first meetings I had as mayor was, I think, Councilmember Bragg, you had talked about, talking about water conservation. I, so thank you. I think this really comes out of that presentation you did when the drought started. So thank you very much. So, oh, yeah, Mr.
I think possibly CalAM could buy a brick for $65,000 and we could set you up.
Great. Okay, with that-
Thank you, Con.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bragg.
I just wanted to reiterate, you know, the, the real meat of this concept. In reading from the staff report, you know, Triangle Park water reduction and pedestrian, public transportation enhancements. So this is really something that we have talked about. Again, Mr. Barretto from Cal-American Water, we really want to thank you for your extremely generous grant of $65,000 in helping us attain this goal. You've been at many, many of our meetings and have heard us talk about this. So being a partner with us in the community so strongly speaks volumes or gallons. But again, thank you.
Great. With, with that, we, I make a motion that we are, entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2016-7673, adding Triangle Park water reduction and pedestrian public transportation enhancements to the CIP two-year implementation plan, dash FYF, FY15, 16, and FY16, 17, accepting a $65,000 donation from California American Water Company and appropriating $95,000 from the RTCIP Prop A Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee towards the park design and construction. Is there a motion? Please vote. Okay, now we have those items, 2.2, and then we'll have 2.8 that we took from the consent calendar. Okay, Councilman, who do you, would you like to answer questions of? Mr. Bradley? Mr. Bradley, could you come up and, so now we're on item 2.2, ratification of warrant register.
Good evening.
Are you done?
Good.
I just had two quick questions because I saw a couple of large items on the warrant register and I wanted to make sure we understood what they were all about. On page 13 of the listing, there's a, essentially three 18,000-plus items that appear to be animal control payments to the city of Chula Vista. When you sum those across 12 months, that's about $225,000, more or less, for animal control that we are essentially contracting out to- for animal control that we are essentially contracting out to Chula Vista Animal Control to provide for Imperial Beach. And my question to you is, assuming that's accurate, is that an expenditure, and it's maybe not your department, maybe it's also the city manager in planning, are there alternatives that are lower cost? I mean, it almost seems to me that if, that over time, four years, that's a million, that's a million dollars. If we had our own animal control staff member and equipment, it'd be hard to spend a million dollars in four years. Over time, it may be more cost-effective. I'm just wondering whether or not paying rent is better than owning the property, so to speak.
Yeah. Councilmember Briggs, by far, the biggest portion of that is actually our shelter fees. And so there are other options. We used to be with the county. And so we could look at and see if the county would be any cheaper than the city of Chula Vista. I believe that the city of Coronado also has an animal shelter. So we could look at other options, but it, the cost is not so much the animal control officer. By far, it's the shelter fees.
We've done the research.
But we can do it again.
Many times.
Glad to look into it one more time.
And you had another item?
Yes, I do. And I'm sorry for raising it again, I have raised it in the past, and I think we have looked into it in the past. But it just seems, when you look at it in the aggregate over four years, a million dollars is an awful lot. But, you know, it seems to me we're trying to be, be cost-effective. So maybe another quick look wouldn't be too inefficient. The other item is, is on page 15. It's the Bay Shore Bike Way, I believe. There are 250,000 and 109,000 dollar checks there. I just wanted to confirm what those were for and whether or not this is on the budget for that project and where the project is in terms of its being on, on time to completion.
The account number that begins with 401, that is a grant source. That is the alternate transportation funding that we received from Sandag. And so that is a grant, the 230,000, that is a grant from Sandag. The 402 account, that is actually the bond proceeds from the former redevelopment agency. Those are just the first drawdowns, there'll be a series of drawdowns. We have, the grant was roughly, it's around 400,000, is that, I don't see Hank. I think it was about 400,000, and I know we're spending 1.2 million dollars in bonds. So yeah, you'll continue to see some drawdowns on that project as it proceeds.
And the question was, is it on time?
It was delayed a little bit because they are researching some cultural finds that they had. They found some Native American tools and some other things when they were doing some excavation. So they're a little bit behind schedule. And they are having, they have actually someone from the local tribe onsite now. So as they're doing excavation, if they see something of value, they do stop and monitor that, make sure that that's happening. So it is a little bit behind schedule, but not significantly.
Okay, so I would like to entertain a motion to have the city council ratify the warrant register.
Some second.
Please vote. Okay, now we're on item 2.8, adoption of resolution number 2016.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, on this.
Let me read it, sorry. Adoption of resolution number 2016-7680, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Pyro Spectaculars North Incorporated, what an awesome name, for production of the 2016 Fourth of July Fireworks Show and to sign the right of entry permit granting Pyro Spectaculars North Incorporated access to the pier to produce the show. Mr. Briggs.
Thank you. I just wanted to see the cost breakdown, there are various numbers, sort of a narrative form in the staff report. But I didn't, wasn't able to get a full picture of what the total cost of the fireworks program is. How much is coming from the port? How much is coming from grants? And and possible donations? And then what is the balance that's likely to be a city expense?
Sure. Probably the best way to provide that information to the city council, and we can do that at your next meeting, is to look at last Fourth of July. What ended up happening was we got $25,000 from the Port of San Diego. There were private donations for about 17,000. And then for the difference, we were actually able to get a grant from the San Diego County Sheriff's Department, where they were able to do some warrant checks and some other things where we were able to keep our public safety costs down. So as we prepare for the upcoming Fourth of July, we know we have the $25,000 from the port. We anticipate that it'll cost about $25,000 in addition to that $25,000, hold the event. What we don't know right now is how much of that money will come in from private donations again. The last two years, it has been right about 17,000. So we could expect that there would be around 17,000 that would come in from private donations. And then we will, once again, seek funding in terms of either grants from the San Diego Sheriff or other sponsors to see if we can close that gap. If not, the reality is we're going to have a fireworks show. And so again, as a city manager, I'm going to plan that we're going to get $25,000 from the port, and we're going to use $25,000 of municipal funds to make sure that we have a Fourth of July celebration. What I hope is that we won't spend any of that second $25,000, either private donations or contributions from the sheriff's department. But I have to plan as though we may have to cover it all.
I appreciate that very much, and that's really all I wanted to know because it didn't appear to me that it was a $50,000 total cost for doing it with all of the, just the way it was written. But now that I look back at that with your explanation, it makes sense. So thank you very much. Thank you, council members, for indulging my curiosity about the numbers in the warrant registry, et cetera.
And maybe we can make a commitment to getting that fund raised, work with the folks who are, to get that, I know they're not here right now. To get that.
One of them's here.
Oh, there he is, okay. Anyway, maybe we can work with you to, and maybe have a launch of that. And really think maybe strategically about how we can make that much more effective. So I really appreciate. No, I think our commitment, I'm sure our commitment would be to help on that and see how we can really get the community to ante up, so anyway.
Well, Mr. Mayor, one of the things that, in discussing that item with the city manager was that perhaps we could be looking at a grant for evacuation, you know.
Homeland Security.
Homeland Security, so that may be a funding opportunity.
Okay, that's actually a great idea. Great, okay, so I can entertain a motion of adoption of resolution number 2016-7680. Please vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Great, regular meetings.